The Noblesville Common Council needed an order at 7:00 for July 27th. If we could all, let's see, who's going to lead it? Mark Boyce, could you lead us on that?
I would lead the flag of the United States of America and public for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, could you call the roll?
Mr. Ayer.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Could I have a approval of the minutes of our July 13th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of our July 13th meeting in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion to approve the agenda in a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. 9-0. Petitions from citizens that are present. I don't have any in front of me, but if anybody would like to comment tonight, there's a white card out front. Seeing nobody come forward. Council Committee reports, Downtown District.
Mr. President, the Downtown District Committee met last Monday and...
Okay, wing it, just wing it.
Yeah, so we talked through, of course, the Black Street Lights that are continuing to be installed, but we're getting close to the end of that project. We are working through alley activation and artwork through there. The Downtown District Committee did approve an expenditure of up to $50,000 to help resurface the brick alleyway between 10th and 9th Street. And so we're working in conjunction with the Noblesville Preservation Alliance and David Highway about memorialize how that used to be, was a brick alleyway and preserving that history and...
Which one is it?
The one behind the gas station.
It's the last alley in the block.
Right over here.
You want to turn the gas station and Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. And working in conjunction with the Engineering Department, they've been able to figure out how we can maintain brick and then have paved areas that will not damage. And then we are also continuing on with our Downtown Streetscape Plan and working in conjunction with the Friends of the Bridge of Flowers to help beautify the Logan Street Bridge, and that project continues to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions, anything to add for the other committee members?
The only other thing was the brand guidelines for the wayfinding signs.
Thank you very much.
That's an important piece as we are moving forward.
Yes.
Helping people find their way around downtown.
Ken Arnoff talked about putting together a packet of information on wayfinding for in the garages that we're going to have and then make that available also for the county garage and so that there is that consistent wayfinding message for parking in our downtown area. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for reminding me of that.
Any other questions or comments? Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met July 22nd, myself, Bill Hampton, Greg O'Connor, Megan Wiles. Lindsey Bennett, City Attorney, discussed legal service funding increase. We'll discuss that some tonight. Sam Behrs discussed the summary of routine appropriation transfers for RC-221 second quarter and also RC-3-21 second quarter. Mr. Behrs also discussed quarterly reports of revenues and expenditures, and Mr. Spalding discussed our 2022 base budget. Again, all this is coming forward to us later, and the claims docket does come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Second.
It's a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. 9-0. Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance 430621 and ordinance vacating right away. Chuck Hayron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In front of you, you will see an ordinance 43 tech 0621, vacating right away for the, at the East Bank Project, the mixed-use development that is underway and been approved. This will be on the western and southern boundary of the McMillan property that everyone is probably well aware of. Previously, or this morning, we actually vacated the rights to the utility that ran underneath there, and we have letters of expressing the disclaiming and all the rights to the utilities in that right of way as well, so this will go ahead and vacate that right of way.
Thank you. Mr. Hayerman.
This is a matter of a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance 430621.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Hand vote, let's see, there's a motion to close the public hearing in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would move that we approve ordinance 43-06-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 430621 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 480721 and ordinance approving additional appropriation in the Fire Community Capital Fund for funding a new fire engine. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and this is the first of a series of items on second reading that together represent the mayor's mid-year budget adjustments for, you know, reasons that were discussed at the last meeting and very simply summarized here. At the time we did 2021 budget, we were in the midst of a lot of uncertainty about the COVID-19 public health pandemic, so certain decisions regarding fiscal restraint were implemented in that budget, and as a consequence, we've moved through much of that, found that some of the worst fears on revenue impacts did not occur, so certain items that were excluded from that budget have been brought forth by the mayor. As I said, this is the first of them, and the item here is for funding for a fire engine that we do have members of the Fire Department here that can speak more specifically to the reason, but as I said, that was discussed at the last council meeting, so if you have questions about the fire engine or the need, questions can be answered. Otherwise, that's basically what's going on here is just addressing that funding need.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding or Chief Mitchell? Did you have anything to add? It's a matter of public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 480721.
Mr. President, seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move we close the public hearing for ordinance 480721.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for 480721 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 48-07-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 480721 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 490721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a safe haven baby box. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, again, similar spiel. This was an item that was considered, or it may not have even actually been considered during the budget, but still has come along since that time, and I think Counselor Hampton was a driving force behind it, and he may have some comments that he wants to say about it. Otherwise, the Fire Department can comment on it.
Thank you, President. I'm just, I think I said a lot last week about it, but just to reiterate, this is a great day for Noblesville, for us to have an opportunity to place a safe haven baby box in Fire Station 71. It will save lives. It already has. The Safe Haven program has been around for several years, and it's closing in on 60 infants that were abandoned, they call it, or saved at a fire station through this around the state, and so it is, it is really a great pleasure of mine to see this get pushed through and... And as I said, it will save lives, and I thank the administration for considering it. I know Chief Mitchell, you and I talked, discussed it about just the implementation, I mean, and the way it works. It's totally anonymous. If someone has an infant that is within 30 days of birth that they just can't handle and they want to drop the baby off, it's totally anonymous. It's a climate-controlled box that is, has an alarm that sounds when the baby is placed in the box, and the fire station will immediately respond. 911 is alerted. Great, good step, a great step for the city of Noblesville. Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything or...
You said everything that needed to be said.
Okay, but thank you, council, for considering this.
Any other questions or comments? This is a matter of public hearing, so I will move to open up the public hearing for ordinance 490721.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing on ordinance 49-07-21.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 49-07-21 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Peterson, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to move that we approve ordinance 49-07-21 as presented.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee.
Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 500721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a new deputy controller position. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, as you might imagine, this is the one, the item on your agenda I'm most familiar with, since it's a position within my department, and just very quickly, this fits right into that circumstance that I described before. This was an item that was actually requested by me for the 2021 budget but was put on hold. And the other simple thing that I can say about it is, it is the rationale behind the request last year and why it's on the agenda this year is, again, as the city grows and develops and we modernize and professionalize our operations, one of the things that we need to do is add some financial analysis and accounting capacity to what historically was a small accounts payable operation when it was a clerk treasurer's office, and one of the specific unique things about this position is, one of the job requirements is to be a certified public accountant, and that's something that will be helpful for the city. So with that, if you have any other questions about the position, I can answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spalding or Mr. O'Connor? I think you brought this up last time.
Yeah, I would only say that Jeff and his team have done a terrific job, and they need some more horsepower to keep up with the growth and the bonding and maintenance of records and just accounting becomes more and more of a task as we continue to grow, so I think this is money well invested for not only us but for the citizens, because I think transparency that occurs as a result of what's going to happen here is going to be greater. So with that, I would fully support the appropriation as it's submitted.
It's a matter of public hearing. Any other comments? It's a matter of public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 500721.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 500721 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Mr. O'Connor, would you like to do the honor?
Sure. I would move that we approve ordinance 50-07-21 as submitted.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 500721 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance 510721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the motor vehicle highway fund for funding streetlights on 146th Street from Cumberland Road to Bergen Boulevard. Mr. Spalding.
Again, another, Mr. President, member of the council, another item from the mayor's list of mid-year budget modifications, and this one, I can't really speak to because I don't even drive on that stretch of road very much, but I do know that Counselor O'Connor is very familiar with the issue, so I'll let him speak to it.
The dance again?
Did you hear about it? Everybody wants to honor him.
Have to raise the roof again?
Yeah, I think we're good with that. You'll be all right. No dancing.
Now, this stretch of road, I mean, the intentions, I think, when it was built in 2005 or '06, with the aesthetic lighting and over time, our little friendly furry creatures, the rodents, have chewed up all the wiring along there that has really rendered those pedestrian lights useless, so we're making a strong effort here to light the intersections that'll make it safer, I think, for not only drivers but pedestrians, and we've had some patience here. This has been on the agenda for four or five years now, but the time is right, the funding's available, so I think between several of my constituents and a few of Ms. Wiles are pleased that we're going to be able to do this, so it just points out the fact that lighting is not inexpensive, but in the end, Duke is going to maintain these going forward, so that mitigates some of the expense for the city, and I think it's, it'll be a great add to those intersections and a great move from a safety standpoint.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This is a matter of public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 510721.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 510721 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 51-07-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 510721 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance 510721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a new deputy controller position. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, yet another item on that, you know, list of things that the mayor brought forth as his mid-year priorities, and this one is a little different. It's a little interesting twist on that. There was actually some funding in the 2021 budget for this purpose, but since that time, the Police Department has kind of brought forward some additional thoughts and ideas about how to expand on that to, you know, add more value to themselves and the citizens, and I think, again, there are folks from NPD here that can speak to it, or I think Counselor Boyce has been involved with this whole discussion, so this is actually augmenting what was included in the 2021 budget to make it a more robust training facility.
Boyce, would you like to add anything?
I think I mentioned everything last, last meeting, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to discuss more.
Questions? It's a matter of public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 520721.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I'd move we close the public hearing on ordinance 52-07-21.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 520721 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve ordinance 52-07-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 520721 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 530721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for funding premium pay for essential workers under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021. Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, of the seven items that kind of fall into this group, this is the sixth, and if I was going to say, find, figure out which one is not like the others, this is the one that's slightly different in the fact that the others are being funded from our traditional city resources, and this item is to appropriate funding from the ARPA monies the city received for premium pay for folks that worked during premium pay for folks that worked during the coronavirus pandemic. It was a desire of the mayor to recognize folks for their work during that period of time, and as required by both that grant and state law, to be able to execute it has to be appropriated by the council, and that's what this action is doing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spalding? It's a matter of public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance fifty-three oh seven twenty-one.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Wiles.
Seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for fifty-three oh seven dash twenty-one.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance fifty-three oh seven twenty-one and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
President, I would move that we approve ordinance fifty-three oh seven dash twenty-one as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance fifty-three oh seven twenty-one and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance fifty-four oh seven twenty-one in ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a police station annex. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, the last of the seven items, and this one addresses an issue with the police department that's been long known and understood. As the city has grown, the space that they have available in the Public Safety Building now, I think when they first moved in there, I don't know that I'm going to get these numbers exactly right, but when they first moved in there, the police department was about a third the size that it is nowadays, and so this is trying to, in the short, from a short-term perspective, address that need and provide additional working space, you know, near the Public Safety Building for the department to grow into as the city continues to work maybe toward a more permanent solution in that regard. And again, I'm assuming there are folks here from NPD that can speak to this a little bit more if you have questions.
Boyce, yours. On this one last time, you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that we have talked about needing longer than a new police station is Pleasant Road Bridge, and so those two are probably our longest things. So this obviously doesn't get us a new police station, but it should help remove some of the offices from the current and at least give us a little bit of time while we decide what we're going to do for long term. So I think I talked quite a bit about it last meeting, but happy to answer any questions if there's more.
Any other questions or comments? It's a matter of public hearing, so I'll open it up for ordinance fifty-four oh seven twenty-one.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing on ordinance fifty-four dash zero seven dash twenty-one. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance fifty-four oh seven twenty-one and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance fifty-four dash zero seven dash twenty-one as presented. Second.
There is a motion to approve ordinance fifty-four oh seven twenty-one and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance fifty-six oh seven twenty-one in ordinance amending the traffic schedule in Chapter seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances. Allison Krupski.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Allison Krupski.
I thought I would interrupt the Jeff Spalding Show, give you a new face.
Thank you for that.
There are three parts to this amendment, so I'll go through each one and ask if there's any question after each portion of it. The first one is at the intersection of Ninth and Wayne Street. This came up back in May when the Hamilton County Park and Garage began to go under construction, increased traffic in that area, and in conversations with public safety, it was decided that there's a safety issue there, and so Chief John Mann signed a declaration to add an all-way-stop controlled intersection there. What this change does is it actually puts it in our ordinances, and it will expire approximately around July of 2022 when the construction is complete, so we won't have to come back again and take it out because it will automatically expire. But that is what the first part is for. Is there any questions on that?
Mr. President, just one. Is seven one adequate, Ally, do you think, time-wise?
Yes. Do you know an update on the parking garage construction?
I mean, I'm almost tempted to tell you.
So that's an approximate date?
Yeah, it says approximate.
So it won't expire until the construction is complete.
Complete. Maybe that should say until seven one earlier. I don't know, whatever.
It says approximate.
Approximately is a great word.
Approximately is a really good word in that sentence.
I thought it was a good word.
You have other synonyms you'd like to use?
Specificity, maybe.
In addition to that, we were reviewing no parking zones on Field Drive, and effectively, Field Drive has no parking from State Road nineteen to State Road thirty-seven except for this portion between Cumberland Road and Sixteenth Street. We've had some complaints or concern from citizens about with the new stadium coming in, people parking in their, on their property, and in conversations, again, with public safety, we recommend changing this and to a no parking zone just for all of Field Drive between State Road nineteen and State Road thirty-seven.
Any other questions?
The third part-
Schools have seen this, that proposal?
Uh, yes.
They're comfortable with it. Thank you.
The third part is Roundabout at one forty-sixth Street in Oleo is now complete. It is only open one lane in each direction, but it is complete, so it is a yield-controlled intersection, so we needed to change that in our ordinance from a stop-controlled to a yield-control intersection.
Questions on that item?
I have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for, especially for that first one. It's already made a difference on Ninth and Wayne.
You can thank Andrew Rodewall for that and police because they made all that happen.
Yep, I appreciate it.
And Street.
Yep.
But thank you for saying that.
And Ms. Bennett.
And Lindsey. Sorry, Lindsey. Everybody, thank everybody.
Mr. Eyre.
Mr. Krupski. Should we pass this on first reading since we already have a four-way stop? And- I think that's a good idea. And Oleo Road. You don't want to come back in two weeks? No. I mean, I can, but no. Oh, you probably will anyway. I would like to make a motion that we waive the rules and pass fifty-six dash zero seven dash twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
The motion to waive the rules and pass this on the first reading in a second. This is a hand vote. Correct? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass fifty-six dash zero seven dash twenty-one.
Second.
There is a motion to approve ordinance fifty-six oh seven and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. On the roll there. Thanks for throwing me off. Council to consider ordinance fifty-seven oh seven twenty-one in ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund and establishing a public hearing.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Hi, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and I guess it's the Jeff and Ally Show. So this item on the agenda, again, first reading for an additional appropriation ordinance, and this is kind of the quintessential reason that you need to do an additional appropriation for an unplanned cost that you wouldn't ever budget for. And it's, so it's for funding for additional costs for outside legal services for certain circumstances that have arisen over the past year, and cities had incurred costs for legal services that were beyond what was budgeted, and City Attorney Lindsey Bennett can kind of answer questions about what was driving those costs.
Bennett, would you like to add anything?
I thought I had sent Jeff to do my dirty work. I didn't realize he was going to. Yeah, so we had some unexpected legal expenses with the ITM case. It was a very complicated case. It involves a lot of environmental concerns, which included getting some environmental experts involved. It also involves some pretty intense insurance policy review, and so we had to get some insurance counsel involved along with our litigation counsel. So there was a lot of legal eyes on this case to make sure that, you know, all of our i's were dotted and t's were crossed. And so we just have some unprecedented and unexpected legal bills that are outstanding. I don't anticipate that this will happen again. This, like I said, this case was a little bit unusual, and then we also had a very challenging opposing counsel as well, so. And then, so some of that is to cover that, and then another portion is to cover the rest of my outside legal expenses for the rest of the year.
ITM cases recoverable, potentially?
I'm sorry.
The ITM cases recoverable, potentially?
Yeah, so one of the causes of action does have an attorney fee provision in the statute, so we are hopeful that when we get a favorable order, we will also get an award of attorney's fees to recover most, if not all, of our attorney's fees and expert fees.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, you need to establish a public hearing for fifty-seven oh seven twenty-one at our next meeting. I'll move that we do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
That's a little backwards there. Right. But why does it say? Is it a roll call vote?
No, just a hand vote.
It says roll call.
No, hand vote.
Man, I was going, going along great.
You're still doing great.
It's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, miscellaneous. Council to consider Resolution RC forty-five twenty-one a resolution approving land acquisition for the Pleasant Street Phase One project. Krupski.
All right, this is a land acquisition resolution for Phase One of Pleasant Street. You guys have an exhibit in your packet that shows all of the parcels that are impacted on this project. There are eighty parcels impacted, but fifty different property owners. So some of the properties, you'll notice, some of the property owners, they're, what it looks like one home has a couple parcels to their name, so that's why there's so many more parcels and property owners that are impacted on this. That I do want to clarify that that could mean temporary right-of-way, which means we're not, it's just temporary during construction. That can mean full acquisition, or that could mean that we're just taking a little bit of a portion of that property, leaving them with their home and the remnant of the property or their business. So that's the one clarification I wanted to make that wasn't necessarily in your memo. And again, this is for Phase One, so River Road to Eleventh Street. We are hoping to have right-of-way acquisition complete by the end of May next year and ready for construction and letting at the end of September next year, so. I recommend that you approve Resolution RC forty-five twenty-one.
Just to be clear, this is the motion to start this. These could, lines could move slightly here and there. This is just a motion to start this?
Yes, so this gives us the ability to start acquiring from those parcels. Lindsey can probably, if you need to add more to that. So yes, these lines could change depending on conversations with, but we can't acquire property from parcels not on that list, so without adding them to the list.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Always kind of concerned me when people get moved from their home and the idea for the city is, what's sort of, is there a plan in place as far as relocation?
So if a homeowner, a property owner, or business needs relocated, there are certain statutes that designate the relocation benefits, and we have a relocation agent. They don't work in the city, but they're an independent consultant that works for our consultant, for the city, that goes out if a relocation is involved. And so the state, I think, determines what is eligible and what is not for relocation benefits.
So it's there, it's available?
Yeah, and I'd like to add, and I think we've stated this prior, but we have met one-on-one with most of the property owners. We've definitely reached out to all of the property owners, so any property owner that has wanted to come talk to us or business owner, property owner, we have met with them one-on-one. We've had fifty-plus meetings with residents in this area just to talk about this, so we're definitely giving them the full story of what that process is and what benefits they're going to have during the process, so. Yeah.
Questions or comments?
Mr. President, just one. Ally, the, is a temporary right-of-way akin to a construction easement? Does it revert back to the property owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so during construction, we'll be able to go in there, but one of the things that we have to do is put it back into the condition it was or better.
Okay.
So.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Eyre.
I know several of these, the names don't match who the real owners are. Was this done? No, this was done recently. Might give me a call tomorrow. Okay. I know that there were some that changed even within the couple weeks that this was drafted. I mean, we drafted it like a month ago, but they should be pretty up to date, though, because I went to the Hamilton County. Yeah. Two, at least two of them, the city owns. Don't have the right names on them. Okay. As long as the address is on there, we should be good, but that's- I don't see it, I don't see the names that they matched. Okay, yeah, come talk to me if something needs to be changed. We can verify that. Okay.
Thank you.
We can move forward with approving this, understanding that this list, there might be additional properties that get added to this list.
Can't add, can't add?
Yeah, there'll be another resolution if there's any properties added, and to Mr. Eyre's point as well, if any of the names are incorrect, that's okay, as long as we have the address and even the parcel number to help ascertain which property it is.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
O'Connor.
I move that we approve Resolution RC dash forty-five dash twenty-one as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC forty-five twenty-one and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Thank you. Council to consider Resolution RC forty-six twenty-one a resolution approving land acquisition for the Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street and Bowden Road Roundabout Project. Allison Krupski.
All right, another land acquisition resolution, one fifty-sixth and Bowden. This one is a lot simpler. You also have exhibit in your packet. You will notice that they're labeled as parcel one and parcel three. That has a purpose. It is because there were three parcels on this project, but we made it work that we wouldn't have to affect one of the parcels, so we are only impacting two parcels with this project, and they are labeled on that exhibit. This project will go to bid at the end of this year with the goal of constructing it next year prior to the opening of Deer Creek Elementary School at that intersection. Any questions?
Questions? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
President?
Yes.
I would move that we approve Resolution RC forty-six dash twenty-one as presented.
Second.
There is a motion to approve Resolution RC forty-six twenty-one and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you. Council, Council to receive summary of fiscally neutral second-quarter appropriations transfers pursuant to Resolution RC two twenty-one. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and I don't know that I really have any requirement to present these things. They're, I mean, to explain them, but what we're doing is just reporting them to the council, but I'm happy to explain them if you would like me to.
Are there any questions on any specific items or in general?
Just a comment, Mr. President. I think this is a very efficient way of handling these smaller transactions, and Mr. Spalding and his team are very transparent about it, so I think it makes a great deal of sense, and it's worked very well so far.
I was completely against it, and I regret that decision because it's always been a great, great thing. There's no action on this item, so if there are no other comments, we'll go on to the next item. Council to receive a summary of appropriations of second-quarter grant proceeds pursuant to Resolution RC oh three twenty-one. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, again, very similar-